Good evening. Tom and Carol and crew, are you all ready to start the work session? Yeah, when you're ready, go ahead. We are on to go till 7:00, is that right, on our agenda?
Yes. Well, thank you for coming, everyone. We have a good program here for you tonight. And that includes some materials that you are receiving now. You have the agenda for tonight's work session. It's a one-sheet item. And what we propose to do tonight is to brief you quickly on all the review materials that you have and are coming, that you have coming to you. To then talk over the comment and issue response paper, which we've emailed Friday, and provided the commissioners in an 8.5 by 14 lengthwise version. Staff and the public have an 8 by 11 version. The one we provided tonight highlights some of the comment response items in green, and we can explain those. And to go over the organization of that comment response and the status of getting you a more complete version of it. We'd like to spend most of the evening, the majority, on the commissioners' questions, issues you may have, amendments. We can start that with the comments raised so far by commissioners, and then move into the most significant proposed land use classification changes, proposed by the Land Use Plan Map, perhaps to public, and then, and then go to those additional questions and issues. Perhaps after looking this over, even have some proposed amendments. We'd really appreciate receiving those tonight, this week. That way, we can include those in the upcoming version of the comment response this week. Then we'd like to spend the rest of the time, 20, 25 minutes, working with you on what the schedule might be, your options for deliberation evenings coming up here, and then how you would like to organize the body of the commission as it goes through the land use plan map to, to have a organized expedited way of getting through all the issues. So that would be what we propose to cover this evening. And I've been requested to keep the first couple items, the first two of the five items tonight, as short as possible, so that we can get into the content here. The materials for planning and zoning, to help with your review of the Anchorage Bowl Land Use Plan Map, are primarily a series of appendices. And page Roman at 4, in your draft plan, actually lays all these appendices out. You can flip to that page, Roman at 4, Roman numeral 4, near the beginning of your plan, and you'll see a set of appendices, beginning with A. And those are what we intend to provide to you. They comprise everything from the public comments you've received, the issue responses, and then a couple of key items that are on their way. Tonight, you've received in hard copy for the first time, an 11 by 17 map folio. Several of our comment responses, several of the issues that the public raise. In our comment response, we refer to this map folio. In fact, if you found it in the plan, even the plan itself refers to maps in this map folio. And so this is Appendix A, map folio. This is a citywide plan, so this illustrates for you, to some degree, the array of factors that went into developing this plan, that the public saw, and the public commented on. These maps, these story maps, tell the story about the plan. They're planning factors maps, they're information, they aren't the plan, but they, they're background information for you. Best way to see them blown up is to go to the online version that we have, that we're building, on the project webpage, and just go into the PDF and blow them up. Eight maps are on the map gallery, and you can go right in there and go to the lot level and zoom in and interact, the land use plan map back gallery. The last several maps in here are actually larger versions of the maps you have in the plan. So you saw an area-specific plans map, you saw a growth and change map, and an actions map. The very last page of the plan is an actions map. So we've provided you with 11 by 17 versions of those at the very end of this thing. Not quite as good as the online versions, but a heck of a lot better than what you, you know, the scale you had in the plan. You can actually basically read them. So those hard copies are available. And we may be referring to this in response to several issues this evening and in deliberations. So it's worth having with you, even though it's so big. This map is data-driven, based on, the bottom line for us is the acreages, and how carefully, efficiently, we use the land supply available in the bowl to meet our future housing and employment needs, based on three land uses, housing, commercial, and industrial, but also keeping track of potential public facility institutional land needs. Appendix B, Growth Report, is about the forecasted growth and the estimated land supply capacity that the 2040 Draft Land Use Plan Map makes possible. In your comment response, the very first substantive comment response, it's item 2-a, the substantive one, it's on page four of your comment response table. It, it gives you an interim draft response to a question several in the public had. Commissioner Spring also raised it. How does the 2040 Land Use Plan alleviate shortages in residential, commercial, and industrial land? That's really the bottom-line question for this plan. And unlike an individual rezoning case, or a site case, or conditional use, in this plan, we're really going to refer to the findings of Appendix B, the Growth Report. In our staff approach to answering, responding to a lot of comments raised on individual sites, where a property owner or commenter sees an opportunity on an individual site, this plan is also keeping track of the ledger. The ledger of, do we have, are we keeping enough industrial land? Are we maintaining what we can of our residential land supply? And we will be keeping you appraised of that ledger as you review these individual proposals, these individual site issues. So Appendix B and its findings are really important. This week, we should have for you this simple table or two, showing the findings of the capacity analysis for the 2040 Land Use Plan. We, we ran a initial run of that analysis in September. We got some initial results, which informed our comment response on page four, in your comment response table. So our quality check, final results of the analysis of potential housing capacity, industrial land capacity, commercial lands, is coming this week. And so you'll have enough information, we believe, to go on in order to deliberate on the 14th, for, to begin your work on the 14th, and deliberating on items that may affect how you classify lands among these three uses. We really do advocate that we keep track of that ledger together, and avoid piecemealing the plan, piecemealing the bowl's land supply, but keeping in our, in our review, staff's review, referring to this, referring to this land supply ledger. Are we, are we making the decision about this site, keeping our eye on the prize, which is enough land for the major uses? So Appendix B, we don't have a whole lot more for that, for you tonight, but that's coming this week. And then also laid on your table there in front of you is another one of the appendices F. It's the Public Involvement Plan and Process. It's available online. We're giving you this hard copy tonight. I, I wish I'd have given it to you Friday. Didn't think about it, but anyway, here it is tonight. So the Public Involvement Plan and Process documents the, just the amount of consultation, the public meetings that took place over the past 15 or so months. This plan started out being based on a lot of public processes for recent plans made, but it had more than 120, 150 consultation meetings of its own, and quite a few public meetings. And we believe that a lot of the material in the public hearing draft plan reflects that process. The backside of your agenda gives you kind of the status of all these materials, appendices A through F, and whether or not we've provided you with the final completed version. Really quick, like, the map folio is still a partial draft, that 11 by 17, so we have a more completed version of that coming in the latter half of November, probably after November 14. But you have quite a bit of it now. Again, the Future Growth Report, you'll have some, the basic numbers this week, but an actual draft of this, again, latter November. Appendix C, Traded Sectors Analysis, you received this on November 4. It's the answer to the question commissioners had when we finished the industrial land supply analysis in 2015. You know, why does this matter? Traded sectors get set, what are the key export generating uses in the bowl, and, and how does that affect industrial land supply? You received Appendix D, all the public comments we received by the November 1 deadline that the Planning and Zoning Commission set for this process. So any comment that we received, written, regarding the public hearing draft land use plan map came to you on Friday as Appendix D-1. This week, we're going to also provide you with Appendix D-2, which gives you as background all the comments we received on the previous draft. Not to torture you, but some of the comment responses that we are referring to now, that you're going to be using to deliberate, actually refer to comments that folks made about the previous draft plan. Some of those issues are still standing. So you'll have the full set of information about public comments. The issue response, Appendix E, you have a partial draft. We intend to provide you a more completed draft on November 10, this week. And that will provide, I think of it as a 50% draft. In other words, we think we could get perhaps up to a majority of the comments received, responded to in this upcoming draft. You'll have it hard copy Thursday, and, and, and it'll be available to support the November 14 deliberations. A final version where we feel more confident, because of the volume of public comments we received in the last week of the comment period before November 1. We, we don't believe we'll have a final completed version for you until, again, latter November. So November 10 will give you enough to go a long ways towards your deliberations on the 14th. The version you have tonight, that we handed out in hard copy, is the same one we sent out, that you've had since Friday. But what we've done is highlighted in green, the far-left corner, you can see the first one on page 6. We've highlighted on green the ones where we feel confident as staff that we've basically completed our response and made what we believe would be a final recommendation from staff with respect to that issue response. So the first one is 2A, regarding neighborhood centers. Starts on page 6, there's a green shading in the far-left. So that, that's our signal to you, that having looked through this document, there are about 22 of these issues where, if we're the commission to want to get started deliberating tonight, these issue responses, we believe we've provided what final information we believe we can provide on this item. The ones that are not green, we're either still working on, finishing up draft response language on, or because we have not received the final summary results of the growth, the growth lands capacity analysis, we don't have enough information today to provide you the final response on. But will the, will the commission to begin deliberating at its regular meeting tonight? We do see 22 items where we're confident the comment responses are final on, from our, from staff perspective on those items. So those are the materials from the appendices, and then at the very bottom of your page, on that backside of your agenda tonight, is references to related land assessments reports, which were not a part of the Land Use Plan Map project, but helped inform it, and what you've received there. So that, those are our materials, and that would lead me into describing this comment response in more specificity, so that we can explain to you what it is and, and how to use it, and characterize it for you. But before I do that, are there any questions with respect to the, the materials? Thank you.
So Tom, if, if we have a packet of, that we'd received previously of public comments, they are now fully incorporated into D-1, so I don't need two separate sets if I have an older set of comments from October 17th, right? These are included in this D-1?
That is correct. D-1 is all comments we've received through the November 1 deadline.
Go ahead.
One of the questions I have, Tom, is the, you mentioned and you reference a number of handouts, and so of course, we're scrambling to make sure we have those handouts. And you went through one, glossed through one fairly quick, and that was a, that was a, an item F. What is that one? I'm not sure I have it.
Yes, Appendix F, you did not have until this evening, and it should be on your table now in front of you. Appendix F is the Public Involvement Plan and Process Documentation.
Doesn't say Appendix F on it, but it's...
It says P-I-P.
P-I-P.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get that title page corrected, so it says Appendix F on it.
I can correct that right now. It says F.
Perfect.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before Tom keeps going? So you're, you're rolling into the specifics of the issue response to date, is that, is that the idea?
We're, we're not going to go through each and every one. We'll hit highlight substantive ones, but first, what I'd like to do is just give you, give you the outlines of what it is, and what, and what it does not yet include, and then move into some highlights. So it's formatted in a way to allow you to refer back to the original comment made. So in your Appendix D-1 and D-2, you have all the original written comments. So for each issue response, let's see, where we, where we base that comment, that issue based on public written comments, I'll just hit one right here. 1A, 1A on page 4. So on the left, the big left-hand column, it refers to residential, industrial, commercial land supplies, statement of the issue, and all this. After a statement of the issue, you see a reference to some organizations or individuals. And that's your link back to the original comments. So in fact, the Anchorage Chamber of Commerce is in D-1, their comment letter is in D-1. And if, you know, if you want to see their comment, you can use that as your link back. So they wrote a letter about the public hearing draft, and we've distilled the issue. Others commented on it, Commissioner Spring. And you can find that. That allows us to distill a bunch of individual comments into one brief issue statement, and write if people sometimes commented on an issue. In the right-hand column, the, the format is simply staff's discussion about it as a response, and then recommendations. We've, with staff, we've made every attempt to, as we go through, we read each comment, we identify each issue, and, and in a lot of cases, you're going to see recommended changes to the plan in response to these public comments. In cases where we don't recommend a change to the plan, it simply says no changes, or no further changes. So you're, you're going to see a lot of recommendations for changes. In this particular draft, sometimes you're going to see amendment language under development, TBD, which to be determined, but that's the, the format. The organization is topical, so at this point in this draft, we, we address the issues by, grouped by topic. And, and so this organization goes through by basic topical area, begins with some general land use policy issues, then some items in Part 2, beginning on 6, having to do specifically with mixed-use centers. Part 3, beginning on page 9, a series of comments regarding open space and public lands, and, and so on. My expectation is that future expanded drafts of this, as we respond to all the public comments, you're going to see more topics than what you see here. And then, at the end, starting in section, excuse me, Part 5, it goes to really comments that are very site-specific. And we organize those in order of, in sections 5 through 8, we organize those in order of the Anchorage 2020 Planning Subareas, which appears as a map about on page 2 of your document. So going from northwest, northeast, central, southwest, southeast.
Sorry, there's a, there's a mouse wishing to make public comment, I think.
I'm sorry?
Some sort of vol wishing to make public comment. So those of you down below, just watch out for a little scurrying friend. Just saying. I don't know if there's any mouse catcher here, Lori or not, but...
Grab some KFC.
All right, just a little added excitement. Sorry, Tom.
Yeah, I was going to go down there, it might run up my pant legs, so I'll stay away Okay, so that, that's, that's our, it's a topical-based organization. A lot of comments came in about grammatical, technical clarifications, things like that. So in a future version of the issue response, you're going to see, attached to the back of it, a series of those corrections. And that's, that's what we have about the organization. If it's, if it's helpful to you all, after the commission has deliberated and has identified its, its own recommendations as to each issue, we can document that in a new fourth column in the table. So again, an expanded version that will enable a significant amount of deliberation, we'll get to you on the 10th for your meeting next week. We believe we're comfortable with about 22 of these, highlighted in green, if the commission were one to get started tonight. But we do believe it will be the latter part of this month before, based on the volume of comments, where we're basically able to give you a full issue response. Also, the UDC and the Geotechnical Advisory Commission have comments incoming. They will hit you midway through your process. The UDC meets on Wednesday, so we should be able to have at least their comments to you by the 14th, and, and issue response in those later this month. Geotechnical Advisory Commission, probably comments to you in early December, just so you're aware of those, too. So at this point, what I could do is hit some highlights among these comments and issues already in the document. We could also move directly into some of the PCC commissioner comments we've received so far, moving into Section 3. Our observation of the comments that we've had an opportunity to read and respond to so far, is that they, they tend to be site or area-specific, focused on perhaps their properties or their neighborhood. That characterizes many of the comments, and, and we didn't receive too many on the overall, questioning the overall categorization of lands, the overall format of the plan. There were comments, a fair number of comments on some of the narrative, the way the narrative describes certain issues, particularly with respect to compatibility of infill development within existing neighborhoods. That issue isn't in this draft issue response yet. So in, in general, we haven't received a whole lot of overarching issue-related comments, perhaps with the exception of 1A, and 1B, 1C, and the, and the land supply. The response to 1A is where we stand now, with being aware of, of our residential land Based on the initial findings, the draft findings from September, we believe that this draft map goes a long ways to alleviate the long-range housing deficit. We've made some adjustments to the analysis based on some quality checking we did. We hope to have our findings for you this week with respect to comparing the estimated housing capacity of the 2040 Land Use Plan Map as compared to a base case scenario for forecasted housing need, based on about a 0.8% average annual growth rate from 2016 to 2040, counting forward a mild recession or slow growth through the early years, and then returning to historic growth rates, 0.8% overall. We're still seeing recommended need for 21,000, up to 21,000 additional households in the bowl over what's there today. It's a caveat that some number of those are single-family home households, that we don't believe there's any way of, of accommodating in the bowl. There just isn't space for some of those. So we anticipate some number of those to shift to either more compact housing, Chugak Eagle River, perhaps the Matsuburo, with respect to single-family. In general... In general, though, we don't believe this plan shoots the moon in terms of solving the problem for compact housing types. And so we're recommending to be very proactive in protecting and more efficiently using our multifamily-zoned housing, residentially-zoned land base, and encouraging more housing in our centers. With respect to the industrial, the 2040 Land Use Plan Map overall treads water. We have a severe industrial land deficit, according to our studies, based on current zoning. And the Land Use Plan Map treads water. It consolidates the industrial land supply, shifting some industrial lands to commercial in South Sea Street, in the Abbott Town Center, and some other, a couple of other areas, but adding a bit of land to the industrial land supply near Boniface, and along the Raspberry Road and some non-aviation airport lands. It comes nowhere near solving the industrial land supply problem. The only possible change we think could make a significant difference would be to expand the industrial land supply outside the bowl. We've thoroughly studied that. You can find some of the findings for our study of that in the industrial lands analysis. Another possibility would be to take more, even more proactive policy approach towards the amount of and types of commercial uses allowed in the I-1 district. That would change our assumptions about the amount of acreage of I-1 that would be available for industrial uses.
Hey, Tom.
Mm-hmm.
Suggestion on that, I mean, I do a lot of work in Spinard, between Spinard and Minnesota, and it's got a, I think Thede calls it the dog patch area, but it's got, you know, a mix of residential and commercial, and then it's also got warehouses and what I consider traditionally some light industrial, not big, big industrial, but light industrial. Have you ever contemplated just allowing some more of the light industrial-type uses in some parts of the B-3?
Yes, in fact, that was a part of the industrial land study, and the new Title 21 does do that, does expand provisions for light warehousing, light contractors, and light manufacturing. You know, what is it called, additive for manufacturing? Is, what are those machines called? Were they, anyway?
Sewing machines? I don't know what machines you're referring to, but, yeah.
Machines that don't have quite the offsite impacts.
Well, I think that's my point, is that a lot of our industrial is pretty light, it's not noxious industrial, which seems to me that that's, you know, how we looked at industrial, is more of a traditional manufacturing, which we don't really have a lot of anyway. And so, I don't know. So you're saying it's already, that's already been accounted for in the code allowances?
Yes, and the, we asked the, and it was suggested to us during the industrial land supply that it could be an answer to the problem to expand provisions for industrial in the B-3. The consultant's response to that is that that doesn't solve the problem. It does help on the margins, but the fundamental problem with the industrial is that it cannot compete with the commercial in the first place, and that it needs a stable, strategically-located land supply for the bulk of it. Stable, protected, and strategic. It can't compete on the land market. It can't cope with a tight land supply by going vertical or more compact as well as commercial can. And so simply allowing it more in the commercial districts in some areas like the back streets of Spinard, or Long Old Sewer, perhaps, Old Sewer, Old Sewer, it could have a marginal benefit, and we certainly do want to do that. But the big solution is to do similar to what we do for residential and what many communities across the US do for industrial, is simply to be more careful about what we do allow in the industrial zones. And we think that the Land Use Plan Map makes that more possible without severely impacting the commercial land market because it does consolidate the industrial land supply away from the areas that are trending commercial, gets it out of South Sea Street along that corridor, gets it out of Abbott Town Center. And with the industrial land supply land inventory analysis, we do have, we do have our fingers on the pulse of what types of commercial uses populate the remaining industrial lands so that we can be very strategic and careful in when we carry out the action items in the Land Use Plan Map to reassess what uses are allowed in the industrial zones, some of which industrial land supply analysis told us we shouldn't have been too protective about, like some of the office types. We believe now we need to relax some of the Title 21 regulations limiting office. Item 1C is another highlight, is a very good question raised by Commissioner Spring, but we've also heard it again in the past. And it is, how does this Land Use Plan Map relate to the Anchorage 2020 Policy Map, which we've reproduced for you near the back of your 11 by 17 map folio on page, after, thank you, after page 31, the bubble dot map diagram, which shows town centers, industrial reserves, and other concepts like transit-supported development corridors, not located exactly where the Land Use Plan Map ended up putting them. So it begs the question, do we need to, what do we need to do with respect to the Anchorage 2020 Policy Map? And I'm going to have Mr. Tobish initially respond to that question, and follow up on our written response that we've developed for that on page 6 of your issue response on item 1C. Mr. Tobish.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. The short answer is, the policy map from 2020 was enabling, basically it's an enabling policy document, and the map in your packet is conceptual locations for those new policies. The long-term intent had always been that the area, district plans, neighborhood plans would fine-tune those boundaries, clarify the policy within those areas, and determine if they were in fact appropriate. So there are instances where those locations, which we have always considered sort of conceptual in the policy map, are fine-tuned in this document.
Doesn't it just go away? I mean, why do we still need the policy map other than it helping us at a kind of summary level seeing things? In which case, I would advocate that it get amended to show more clearly what the plan map's doing. Why would we, why would we need it?
We believe that it's still, it's a part of the Anchorage 2020 Land Use Concept Plan. And at the concept level, it is actually still at that high level establishing the policy framework, the policy vision, the basis for what's going on at a far more detailed level in the Land Use Plan Map. What we recommend to do is that when there's a more complete update to Anchorage 2020, that we replace it out with a new growth concept map. In the meantime, what we recommend is to provide some language in the 2040 Land Use Plan Map that explains this relationship so that when folks have the question, there's some language, and to bring that to you by next week and to try and clarify this relationship. We don't have the budget scope to amend it at this point, and we recommend to retain it. Deleting it is troublesome for Anchorage 2020 because, you know, I don't know how many references to it are strewn all over Chapter 4 and Chapter 5.
Maybe I misspoke, so don't, I'm fine with it from a historically, historical context standpoint, but what I don't want is us to be debating between the policy map and the plan map moving forward. So just as long as it's explicit that says, this was used as a framework to develop our plan map, but we're not going to reference it, we're going to reference the plan map moving forward. So just be really crystal clear on that.
Through the chair, can I, my problem, I think, is that, I think you kind of hit on it, when we have a rezone or something, or that comes up and it's, oftentimes they'll say whether or not it's in a town center or along a transit corridor, and that makes a difference as to whether or not we approve rezone, especially if it's higher density along a transit corridor or more commercial in a town center. So when this comes up, will you, say for instance, there's a, something at the corner of Dowling and Lake Otis, a rezone, and will you say that it's close to a town center and therefore should be considered for the rezone, or is that going to be eliminated in the comments from staff?
The Land Use Plan Map will be the document that applies in that case. And we believe that you raised a really good issue, and that we really do need to make it explicit how it's used going forward. To me, it's additional explicit language in the black and white in the 2040 Land Use Plan Map that provides for anyone, you know, the clear guidance as to what to do in that situation with the rezonings in other cases. In any case, we do wish to submit language to that effect for your review and consideration. Another highlight, before we get to all the commissioner comments, another highlight we have is a pretty significant issue that was of concern to the UAA. On item 3A, it appears on page 9. They are, they were very concerned about the way, the concept of open space, wetlands, trail corridors is visually depicted on the UA Northern Development Lands. It's our take, and we had additional consultation with UAA, it's our take that their master plan, their intent, and the UMED district plan itself are in sync with the intent of the Greenway development overlay that we had placed on the UAA lands. But after further consultation with them, we believe that the UMED district plan and other master plans in this area cover the issue adequately. And again, I'm going to have Mr. Tobish go over our recommendations with respect to how we refer to and depict the open space, natural areas, aspects of the UAA Northern Development Lands. Do you all need someone, while Thede's talking, I can come up and point to it? Do you know where I'm referring to?
In the issue response?
That, on the map.
All right, yeah, I think we, those of us that listened to the testimony, I think it was pretty clear from the testimony, yeah, I think, just as before Thede goes, could you just clarify, when you, when you put this recommendation out there, do you intend to follow up with UAA at all ahead of time, or do you just intend that, you know, it's a one-way, you know, it's kind of, they had their comment, this is our response, we either agree with it or not, and then they have their second bite of the apple at the assembly? Is that the process?
We've had an additional consultation with UAA and are informing them of our recommendation in this case.
When that's the case, can you say that in your issue response?
We certainly can.
I mean, and the same thing would be if you had to reach out and clarify with Turnigan Community Council or somebody else, could you just say that we've had a conversation at the executive board, or with the president, or whatever, and just so we have that background?
Yes, we can.
Mr. Wolf, I think you were gonna, wasn't that the guy from Reservoir Dogs? Wasn't he, wasn't it Mr. Wolf, the guy that he brought, okay, clean it up for us, Thede.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I'll put that aside for now. So the, we had to back out of that fairly complicated discussion on pages 46 and 47 of the document describing the Greenway supported development overlay at the university area, UMED district. So we had sort of a three-part, three-pronged attack to resolve the issue, but retain the intent and the concerns for the area. If you look on your page 9 of the issue response, the first item would be, we're taking the overlay off of the map. So over the university area, it's all blue, and it will no longer have that green boxy overlay on top of it. Secondly, within the original text on page 46 and 47 where it's described within that overlay, we're taking all the references to the UMED district lands out of the discussion. So it will no longer be described there. And then we'll change the text on page 39 of the document to add a new paragraph that's shown in text, underlying text on page 10 of your issue response. And then finally, we'll add modifications to the bullets on page 39 that describe the character of that type of an area. So it's now merged all within the University Medical Center designation, which is that blue on the map.
And all of these changes were made in coordination with, or in conjunction with UAA themselves? Is that correct?
Yes, we met with, with...
And had to follow up to the previous?
We met with the land managers, discussed their concerns and their comments further, and this was our response.
And do they concur with these recommendations?
I'm not sure that we've gotten through to them completely, but it's our intent to sit down and go through them systematically.
So without further public testimony, their only bite at the apple again is to take a look, what Mr. Robinson was saying, is take a look again at what is recommended here and make comment at public hearing with the assembly?
That would be the case with most commenters, just because of our timeframe. Our intent is to have as much consultation as possible, but with respect to some of the specifics in the language, we're not able to get to UAA before deliberations here, yes, the assembly process is the next stop.
I think, and I'm going to speak for Mr. Robinson, I think that was the crux of his comment, to identify what has been done in coordination with, but if they have not in agreement with what's recommended, right now, this could be a surprise to them, although it may be in concurrence with what they were looking at because you deliberated. But again, they haven't seen this, so the plan's changed, and any further ability to comment will be on the final draft that goes to the assembly.
That's right. I would just say the only other way around that, as I see it, is to... I would just say the only other way around that, as I see it, is to reopen a public hearing with the proposed issue response out there. And if you wanted to even take it a step further, if you wanted that fourth column that said kind of where the Planning and Zoning Commission was leaning on that, you know, you could go through that process, have another public hearing, and then deliberate, I mean, that's, you know, that's sort of the question of the, you know, the public hearing having been closed were limited unless you want to reopen it.
But again, there will be another public hearing comment period available during the assembly. Too bad we can't combine all these.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that that's necessarily a bad idea either, right? What I just suggested, but it takes time. What I can say, and we'll get to it in a second, is given the list of things that are yet to come to us or that have just come to us, we're not deliberating next Monday. I mean, I think we all sort of recognize that, so I just want us to be, we'll get to it, but we're going to be realistic with what we're able to get through. I mean, if I'm not going to get something until Thursday, you know, we'll see.
If I could just add, we're fairly confident that the university would, will be pleased with this new language because it tracks very closely with what we heard.
Item 3B begins a series of comments regarding the public lands west of the Anchorage International Airport and within the airport that are valued open space and green belt areas. And in Item 3B, there is an overlay line pattern. It's basically similar to the West Anchorage District Plan line pattern for municipal lands that could be affected by airport expansion, primarily Point Warrenzoff Park, the south end of the AWU Treatment Facility Reserve, and some HLB lands, including HLB lands that are a part of the coastal trail.
And one of the questions I've always had, and it's a, and I get different answers, and when we look at the land out there at Point Warrenzoff and we look at the park, for example, different maps have shown this is, and correct me if I'm wrong, airport land being used as a park controlled by the city, or is this city land total or separate from anything that the airport controls?
Yes, Point Warrenzoff Park appears on the land use plan map as light green because it is a municipal dedicated park. The land use plan map land pattern, the seafoam blue color of the airport, that base color identifies for you what lands are airport-owned lands. There are some other colors there, generally blue. Those are municipal lands, and the northern one near the Point Warrenzoff itself, north of Point Warrenzoff Park, is the AWU property.
Can you reference a map in here that's better to look at?
You know, your copy of the plan has an 11 by 17. Do we have a, do we have, do we have the ability to hook up to the, we have a, no?
I also have a question on the specific area through the chair, if that's acceptable. I'm not sure if your response actually addresses the specific comments that were brought forth on this issue. This is an area that I have gone into detail about in the past couple of years, and kind of my knowledge on it is that this was land that was proposed by the airport that would be good for them to trade, and then that was kind of taken as word in the West Anchorage District Plan. And despite the fact that there was overwhelming opposition between, from the Turnigan Community Council and even from the community at large, I think it was 25 years ago, community came out strongly against any sort of this trade, and even recently this year, our mayor has been against this trade. And so while I appreciate you that we need to be planning the future for airport changes, I am just worried that we're setting ourselves up for, instead of planning for a solution, we're setting ourselves up for the same fight that we've been having for 25 years, the way that this is worded. And so if we put in our plan that this is a possible solution, it's going to be taken as a good, like, it's taken as something that's been vetted and it's been looked at, but so far it's been vetted and shown that it's not helpful. And so I am not sure if your response actually responds to those comments and those concerns from the people that voiced on this issue. And I think it's something that needs to be seriously reevaluated considering the controversial nature, and also it just seems to go against the additional goals that you have in the neighborhood for the green, the greenway-supported development and those continuous access. So that is something I would like to see looked at more in the future, and I also think that there should be further talks with those communities, because I don't think there was any outreach back to Turnigan Community Council where you expressed why this was gone, the same that you went and talked to the UMED. I think it's important that you go back to those areas and really get a further discussion on why this is important.
We can certainly do that. We can seek a time when either the community council's meeting or when its land use committee is meeting. Our overall approach is that we recognize that community opposition and the concerns, what we are trying to address is what we believe to be is a potential for an airport expansion, which isn't driven by anything locally, but which could occur, and our approach is to, in the event that that were to happen, to work it in a way that, within our local circle of influence and ability, to yield us the most open space that we can out of the situation. And is there anything that you would like to add to that? But we will certainly follow up with the Turnigan Community Council and others who may have commented on this item before deliberations.
It also might be helpful to reach out to the mayor's office because they have also been vocal on this issue, just for background and getting context, because I think kind of taking the West Anchorage District Plan in this area as kind of the stated best option might not necessarily be appropriate in this case.
I guess we were also looking at the forecast, potential forecast of a timeframe for when a north-south, a second north-south runway might be needed, and that indicated that it could all be within our Anchorage 2040 timeframe. And if the FAA and the industry were to determine it's needed, they would begin 10 to 15 years in advance planning for that, and so we believe it may be a situation that's very well within our planning horizon to deal with based on more recent information in the West Anchorage Plan.
And just to clarify, I'm definitely not opposed to that forward-thinking and that planning, I think it's really good. I just think that potentially we're setting it up for a way where we're just planning for obstruction in the future, whereas if this plan is looked at more and those comments are considered and incorporated into the plan, it can at least show that you addressed those issues. Thank you.
So I am going to move to, I think we've discussed 3C, 3D, Turnigan Bog, and that may be a similar issue, but I'm going to ask Mr. Tobish to summarize our, maybe summarize how we interpreted the issue and responded to the Turnigan Bog item in 3D.
So if you look at your map, your large-scale map, the, this is referring to the northeast corner roughly of the airport area, north of Lake Spinnard and Lake Hood in that section. And the comments came in, as they did in the West Anchorage District Plan, to show a larger area of green or overlay there to represent preserving important sections of Turnigan Bog. So what we have done is essentially just mirror the West Anchorage District Plan map, land use plan map there as well. There's more detail, but that's the crux of it.
Jumping to Item 3K and 3L, these items, as stated, have to do with an inventory of our open spaces and park lands, and they relate to comments we've received, not necessarily from the commenters shown in 3K and 3L on Page 14, but from others about, could we review municipal open space areas, municipal lands, and identify if any of those could be put to use to, for different use, such as housing? But 3K starts out with a recommendation by the commenter that our housekeeping rezoning, where we take all of our existing dedicated park lands and rezone them to the new Title 21 PR Parks and Recreation District, that there'd be added to that a task to identify our non-dedicated parks and open spaces owned by the muni and dedicate those as well. We recommended to keep the housekeeping rezoning clean and separate from adding new dedicated parks, and so action, the action item 8-4 in the plan is simply a housekeeping rezoning. It's actually being worked on now by the department. But in Issue 3-L would be an action item to review, and it's actually an action item in the draft plan now, it's Action Item 8-8, is to look at municipal open spaces that aren't dedicated, and to review them for potential dedication as parks, or if they would be more appropriately used for another purpose. As far as this plan goes, we didn't identify a bunch of municipally-owned, excuse, municipally-owned open spaces where those could be converted to housing. Part of the reason may have been our schedule, but this Action 8-8 would be an action to go through that process. What we have had time to do in some cases is identify churches and other institutions that might be useful for housing. We designated them in such ways in the land use plan map. But I don't know if you all have any other thoughts on that matter, but that's, just thought I'd bring that to your attention.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could we go back and revisit an item real quick?
Thank you. We kind of wheeled over it kind of quick by the time I got my documents put together, but specifically to Item 3C, airport land trade, I've looked at all these maps, I've taken a look at, you know, kind of the Ted Stevens Anchorage International Airport boundary. What's going to happen to, like, the Millennium Hotel? Are they within that boundary?
They are outside of that boundary, and they would not be directly affected.
So then the other private ownership lots, there's only a couple of them, they would be outside that boundary as well?
The airport, the whole idea of a land trade would be solely between the municipally-owned and airport-owned lands. There wouldn't be any private properties involved.
No. Okay. Just from this view, it kind of looked like it incorporated that commercial development. I was just curious. Thank you.
The DOT and the Anchorage Metropolitan Transportation Planning Group had a lot of comments, and we will be bringing completed responses regarding those comments. The DOT is concerned regarding the potential impacts of putting a lot more density, people, housing, businesses in commercial centers, where there is not an adequate local street, trails, sidewalks, and collector's street network to pick up all that traffic that would be created and would threaten the function of their arterials. And we are taking that comment very seriously and attempting to put in some additional language in this plan to address those possibilities. And so we are developing a response to those items, a lot of the Section 4s regarding that.
Mr. Chair, Tom, that's also an issue I've been thinking about a little bit, and sort of actually doing, running a transportation model scenario on this land use plan, which I'm not saying that maybe we shouldn't do that, but we might want to think about it, but it won't be in your scope or timeframe. But sort of that, there's at least three of the land use designation changes that I saw, and were reviewing them, and there were probably over 30 that I looked at that involved density changes. Three which I think might be problematic are, one, the land use designation change on East 24th Avenue on the west side of Lake Otis. It's basically we're changing from R1 to R3, and it's a, to me, it's, it doesn't overburden Lake Otis necessarily, but I think there might be some turning problems in and out of that neighborhood if you put a lot of apartments there, because it's, the road is substandard as it is. You'd have a lot of people waiting in line there, making left turns and blocking up traffic, and there's already a lot of traffic accidents. It's been looked at extensively by the traffic department, and they haven't really come up with a solution yet. This might just exacerbate it. Another one is the rezone, the land use designation change along O'Malley, just east of the Seward Highway. And we looked at that a couple of times, I think, in the, from the Planning and Zoning Commission. There were some actions that we reviewed, and I think it's been postponed for at least two years. The land use designation would substantially change the density there, and I think there's a problem with getting in and off of the O'Malley Road there. This is kind of a valley there, they require, unless you make a left turn lane dedicated there, it might be a real problem from a safety point of view. Third one is the really extensive land use zone, land use designation changes along Artic and Chugash Way. I understood that Chugash Way right away is so narrow that it's not really possible to expand the road or to provide sidewalks there. Currently, it's very unsafe. People have to walk in the street, there's no streetlights there. Unless you could convince me that there's a probability that you can change that street where the access is going to have to come off of, then I don't think I could support a rezone, or not the rezone, I keep saying that, but a land use designation change there. So those are three that I would like staff to look at and respond to. I suspect, though, that there's more than that out there. I can't really, I don't feel responsible for reviewing all of them and making sure that all of them work. I think somebody should probably do that, somebody from traffic or somebody from AMATS or, I don't know, DOT. or I don't know, DOT would do it, but to assure us that these zone, or land use designation changes aren't going to be negatively impacting traffic or causing safety problems. Because when we come back to us with the rezone, they're going to say, well, it's in the land use plan map, and you should do it, you should rezone it. Well, then we get a, maybe we ask for a TIA or something, and they come back and say, well, this is a real problem. And then, well, we already made the decision when we went, reviewed the land use plan map. So I think another level of review of these, at least cursory reviews would be good to assure us that we aren't causing some problems here.
I'd like to respond to John's point first. I think you make a good, good point. I think many of us that deal with infill and redevelopment scenarios have been asking for that type of analysis to be done for a long time. So I have two issues. One is you're absolutely right, it ought to be, we ought to look at it. But number two, I'm unwilling to sort of only look at our possibilities based on existing capacities. I mean, in other words, who's, what's wagging what here? So in other words, do we, do we have a plan that states what we want, and then we figure out how or if that can be accommodated? Or do we just say, here's the existing limit, and we're never going to get beyond that, therefore we've already determined? So I'm not blowing over your comment, but I do think I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to, you know, to me, if that step is unable to be, is unable to happen now, and I would wager it's not just the TIA put forth by a developer, it's the city who's suggesting that this be the policy that's bigger than one landowner, figure out how to do that analysis, and find out what solutions drive, drive that implementation. So it's more complicated than, you know, but we start by saying this is where we think there is opportunities, or for other reasons, unbalanced, we think this is a good idea. Then what in that process is the point at which you do that analysis?
Yeah, I'm not saying that just because there's a potential problem, we should not include it, but I want to know whether there's a fatal flaw in it, basically, with something that we can overcome.
And so that's, I mean, by my estimation, that analysis to determine whether there's a fatal flaw hasn't been done now. So what do we do? We just call it out and say that, you know, you ought to really make this a priority to do this analysis, so we don't get ourselves in trouble two years from now with a rezone, or, you know, I mean, at that point, what's our recommendation? Because, because we're not going to stop and do that analysis and figure it all out before we get this plan through, right?
No, and it's impossible, I think, to look at all of them in those terms. And I think DOT is a little bit overreaching there.
You think?
About, any density, basically, is going to cause problems. Obviously, it's going to cause more traffic, right? So I don't buy that as a fatal flaw or a problem. But there's a few areas I see that there are some real problems here. Either we address it now through review, or we put some wording in there that says, these are all subject to further review of traffic impacts or something, so that we don't, we leave ourselves a way out when there is a rezone that comes for us.
You got any suggestions on how to, how to make sure that, that John's concerns are addressed? I mean, is this, is this an action that's already contemplated by the plan to do this further analysis? Or are we just, I mean, take any of those examples that he brought up? So we approve a plan that has the higher intensity, and then what? You wait for a private owner to come along and request a rezone, and then we ask them for a TIA and tell them if they can do it or not? I mean, what's the, that to me doesn't seem fair.
Well, in some cases, we will, through further review, take a look at, and maybe an area just doesn't look like it's a very wise place to put a lot more people. Or if, like you say, there's a way to provide for the land use in the future by changing the infrastructure, investing in more infrastructure, or some other solution, then we can perhaps add language to the plan somewhere that ensures that happens. This is certainly a plan that already emphasizes the importance of infrastructure improvements in order to implement a lot of aspects of this, not just streets, but there are places designated for a lot of new land use in this plan, where the water, wastewater would also have to be improved. So we can certainly improve language, too. That's another way. And maybe there is some language we can add to, you know, ensure, remind us that even a rezoning needs a TIA before, just to make sure that we can, we can handle the traffic. Chugash Way might be a little bit different beast in that we, we do envision in the plan, we count on the plan identifying that whole area as a reinvestment focus area. We're counting on change in that area. And we know Chugash Way is, would need to be completely upgraded, and this plan seeks ways to do that. But we will definitely follow up on those three items, including with the traffic or transportation planners. Our next highlighted item, getting into the sub-areas, and then we'll go back and hit the Planning and Zoning Commission comments we've received so far. On the northwest corner of Tudor Road and Piper Street, we have a land use designation on the public hearing draft plan of urban residential high, with a stipple pattern of residential mixed use on it. It cross-references basically to, essentially, an R4A district, or a district that would require residential and allow some commercial mixed use. This is not consistent with the UMed plan, as it was adopted by the Assembly, which identifies the area as office-low intensity, which would point to an RO district. The land use plan map is a, is a bit of a different process. We're looking at different factors. Like I mentioned, we're very interested in preserving residential land capacity, based on our land capacity analysis. And so when we look at individual parcels throughout the bowl, we're looking at the overall ledger. What are we doing to our residential housing capacity when we make an individual's decision on a site like this? And so, the land use plan map, what we, we recommend that, in order to respond to the comment, that, one of the concerns about the comment is that multifamily stacked housing isn't, isn't financially feasible. It's 30% to 40% under. One possibility could be to change the designation to a medium-density residential, which would allow for a greater variety of housing types on a part of the lot, doesn't lock someone into having to do a stacked multifamily, would also significantly reduce the amount of housing that would be required on the lot, a portion of the lot. Actually, there are three. A portion of the land that would have to be devoted to housing while still allowing office, or medical office, or a mix of uses. If that were to be, if that were to be a choice, an RO with an SL, requesting housing units along with an RO district, that would be consistent with such a color, to change it to compact mixed housing medium on the land use plan map, with a stipple, allowing mixed use. So it would not require so many housing units, not require multifamily stacked, but still attempt to preserve as much of the housing capacity as we can. However, the UMed District Plan is the adopted plan by the Assembly for that area, and is the letter of the law, so to speak. In the land use plan map, the timing is a little odd in comparison to the rezoning case for this very site that's on your agenda tonight. Not by our choice, but more by, I guess, coincidence than anything else.
Can I make a comment?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Tom, the, so you're saying basically that the staff report that we received regarding the rezone didn't include this recommendation because it's not approved yet? The land use plan map is not approved, so the staff didn't recommend the ROSL in the rezone case?
I guess that's correct. When rezoning staff, they look at the plan, they try to stay with the black and white, and look at what are the adopted policies that apply. Meanwhile, we're working on a city plan and trying to identify what land uses would be most appropriate in the long run for the area and the city as a whole.
Yeah, if you don't get into the, too much of the rezone, but go ahead.
Okay. Tom, I'd like to point out on map, on the, on the big maps that you just handed out today, the page BL-2, land suitability, the area of land at the northern edge of the airport. And it's, and it's green, it's designated future parkland and open space. BL-2, at the, at the northern edge of where the proposed new north-south runway might go.
Yes, in response to that. So BL-2 is, is in a policy map. This is a window into the land capacity analysis. And so the assumptions you see on here are assumptions that drove our, our, our land capacity assumptions for determining how many acres we have available for commercial, industrial, residential. So you have this window into the assumptions in the GIS, the computer, when it sees a vacant piece of land, or any piece of land without development on it, is that piece of land going to yield us some commercial floor area, some housing units? And so what we need to do is a better job on this map of clarifying what, exactly what you're seeing and what it's used for. It's not a policy map, it's not proposing the future, it's a, it's a window into analytical assumptions. And we provided it to try and be as transparent as possible about the land capacity analysis. But I, a number of folks in the public identified a number of technical issues with these maps, clarifications we need to make, and we will be bringing those forward, including this one.
So in parallel to my co-patriot here next to me, that we, this has been a hot topic, a hot button, it's been a community council issue for many, many years. And when you take that map in conjunction with map CC-5 on the land ownership, it's clearly designated as land owned by the Ted Stevens International Airport, the state.
We'll take a look at that. Thank you. I'd like to go back and hit some, a few more issues that the Planning and Zoning Commissioners Mr. Spring had a couple of comments regarding neighborhood commercial districts, implementation districts, and item 2B, on, oh, excuse me, items 2A and 2B on pages 6 and 7. We hope we've responded to those adequately. They, we don't believe that there's a change needed to the plan at this time, but we appreciate the comment, and look forward to any further feedback or dialogue about those two issues if we miss the mark on those. There are a couple from, Mr. Spring having to do with the transit-supported development corridors that appear on the land use plan map, and that don't appear on the land use plan map, in Section 4, page, pages, beginning on page 19, 4G, transit-supported development corridor that's new on Northern Lights Boulevard, and then 4H, removal of the Jewel Lake Transit Supported Development Corridor. We've been working closely with the Public Transit Department on this plan. Public Transit is about to unveil two proposed options, either of which would substantially restructure its routes, different from anything we've seen before in Anchorage. Northern Lights Boulevard would become a 15-minute headways transit corridor under either option. And Public Transit Department recommended that we add the Midtown segment of Northern Lights Boulevard as a transit-supported development corridor. DOT has also indicated to us that because they like couplets, and the DOT likes couplets, that they're more comfortable with more frequent street crossings in the future for pedestrians in that area. And so we, we also looked at the land use in Midtown and identified that as having a lot of potential redevelopment potential that could take advantage of that 15-minute headways, which we'll have in very few other places in town, if either Option A or Option B from Public Transit goes forward. And then there's another segment along Northern Lights where, based on the existing zoning or housing capacity analysis, there is opportunity there, a little ways either side of Boniface on Northern Lights Boulevard. But the Northern Lights corridor connects between Creekside Town Center area, the UMed District in Midtown, and then downtown. And so that's one of the drivers of the frequency of the route there. And so we, we recommend adding that. It's not appeared in Anchorage 2020, it's new, it's new information, and we support that. With respect to Jewel Lake, Jewel Lake Road is a transit-supported development corridor in Anchorage 2020. And based on our growth rate, and what we see is the remaining development opportunities within a quarter mile of that corridor for most of its length, and Public Transit's comments about the operations cost there, Public Transit is thinking of possibly either reducing or abandoning fixed route bus service in that area, in their, in their plan, and recommended we remove that area. If, we, we, we don't support as a preferred option to continue to keep it. However, you know, if it's the interest of the Planning and Zoning Commission to keep it reinstated on the land use plan map, we would just recommend putting it pretty low on the phasing priority among future investments in these transit-supported development corridors, focusing on Spinnard, focusing on others further north. But that's the gist of our response so far to those items.
To the Chair, yeah, I appreciate the response there. Did you say DOT is in favor of adding new pedestrian crossings on Northern Lights and Benson?
That was an informal comment in a consultation meeting. They had a lot of concerns about streets like Tudor, where, because there's not a couplet, additional crossings would, they believe, really back up traffic and create congestion. additional crossings would, they believe, really back up traffic and create congestions and really hit the capacity and volume of traffic that our national highway system can push through. But when you have a couplet like Northern Lights-Benson, the impacts of more frequent crossings and controlled intersections are much less on the through traffic. And I guess our best example is, you know, when you hit the lights through Downtown on Fifth Avenue, right, you just cruise right through, thanks to Fifth Avenue's couplet of Sixth Avenue. And so, in general, that's what I sense from DOT. Now, is DOT going to be excited about adding more transit-supportive corridors on Northern Lights? I don't know that, I'm not sure about that, but we did see the opportunity there in Midtown.
Just, this is probably more discussion that we can, we have time for, but did you do any analysis of the, since you're really changing, pretty substantially, the transit-supported corridors, did you do any studies of the densities along Northern Lights in particular, to show whether or not it meets what the Anchorage 2020 called the threshold for that, which was nine to 12 dwelling units per acre? Because Northern Lights Boulevard has a lot of single-family neighborhoods there, it does not come close to nine to 12 dwelling units per acre. I don't see how that can be a transit corridor if it has such low density.
That's correct. In fact, Public Transit did a transit propensity map. We owe you that map, that's one of the maps that's still missing from your map folio. And with our new findings for the land use plan map capacity, we mean to finish that with, and show the future capacity as well. We only recommend a public transit-supportive corridor, the hatch marks, on the Midtown segment and that segment right around Boniface, not the rest of Northern Lights, because West Northern Lights, much of East Northern Lights, we don't see much potential there either within our planning horizon, and avoid those areas on the transit corridors. The segments we do recommend are where we see the existing zoning and the future capacity as having, you know, you have this great opportunity to leverage, to just grab the coattails of 15-minute bus service, and really take advantage of it there, and run with it, in those two segments of Northern Lights, ignoring the rest.
Okay, I would like to see the propensity map, the transit propensity map, I'd be really interested in that. I just, I'm a little bit worried about the transit plan, as I, from what I know of it here. Making such a, this isn't the place to talk about it, but they're going to be making a huge change to the transit system. I hope they know, I hope they don't make a big mistake and end up with really bad transit service and ridership, because, boy, I don't think I'd have the guts to do that.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Through the chair, Hal, the Planning Director. We are involved in very intensive three- or four-way discussions right now with DOT, Transit, our own engineering and planning, and trying to make sure that we can accommodate all those on our key corridors if we move to a, from a spread out to a concentrated service scenario. So that's ongoing, we'll keep you updated, and we'll bring you those maps that you've requested. So I think they're also, they may actually be available online through the Transit webpage, but we'll bring them to you.
We would like to go ahead and ask, we've used up a lot more time than we hoped in my running through some of these highlights, but we're really interested in learning from Commissioners about further questions you've developed, or comments, issues, and amendments that you may have. And we also have, within the next 15 minutes, we'd also like to touch on your schedule for deliberations, and how you'd like to go about that. But any, do Commissioners have further issues and comments they would like to provide us today, or as follow-up?
I have a question. I just, clarification about the greenway-supported development. I think it's somewhat unclear, or maybe it's unclear because it's a combination of these things, whether or not the areas mapped out are areas that are either to be designated as that greenway, or the areas that are be designated to get development that will go next to that greenway. And I think that would be helpful to get more of a clarification there that way. Just because in some areas, it looks as though it, on the map, it marks out a corridor, and some areas it appears to be patches that are even far away from the corridor, and it kind of seems like I'm getting conflicting information going from what's written out in the plan and what's on the map.
Yes, that's a really important question, and we will address that and clarify it. Several folks have come forward with that same issue, so we will try to respond to that, and perhaps amendments.
And this is Greg. And one of the questions I had, and one of the earlier comments I was reading regarding the railroad being included or not included in the transportation plan corridor, or one of the corridor maps, I didn't recall hearing, I saw their comment, but I don't recall hearing it discussed in the last meeting, although it's been discussed in components as to the stations. Have we addressed the railroad's comment about being incorporated into the transportation corridor map?
Yes, thank you for that question. We have a placeholder, that issue, we have put that as one of the issue response items. Mr. Spring, Anchorage Citizens Coalition, and several other parties also provided comments about the transit, excuse me, commuter rail stations and rail corridor, and we will provide a thorough response on that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, why don't you, is there anything you want to add on the schedule, or the format? I mean, we have about five minutes, I'd like to give everybody a break before we come back at seven, but what did you, do you have a proposed schedule for us?
We had, we provided some options. The case is on for tonight, and we weren't sure if the Commission were interested in beginning its work. If so, the green highlighted items on the issue response would provide you some items to begin with. If that's not the interest of the Commission, we would have a partially complete comment response that would have significantly more items where we would have finished for you that could theoretically support deliberations on the 14th next week. That's the interest of the Commission. If the Commission wants to go with that kind of expedited schedule, we will provide the remainder of the materials later this month to support. You could have a special meeting on either the 29th or the 30th of November, or if you were to start on November 14th, you could also start on November 14th and use part of your December 5th and/or 12th meetings to continue those deliberations. We're probably, for staff, we're probably best ready to start no earlier than next week, but again, you could start tonight on the items we have. And so it's really the Commission's choice as to when it wants to begin. When it does begin, particularly when we have a more completed issue response, one option is to go into deliberations as a committee of the whole, and go down the list of comment issue items in the table. As the Commission resolves an item, we can record what its recommendations are, and then come back to you with a completed table with a new column documenting the Commission's action on each item. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I mean, I tend, so first of all, you know, it's my intent to adopt the whole thing tonight, you mean you're not ready? Let's get this thing out of our queue. I'm tired of carrying all this paper around with me. So we are not touching it tonight. I think my question, it's the only thing on our agenda on November 14th, is that right? It looked like I had an agenda here, yes? At least according to this blue agenda, that's it, yeah? So just before we go there, the dates at the end of November, you sent out a doodle poll, and I don't believe you got enough to hold a meeting. So I think those are off the table, unless people just didn't respond to them.
This is Carol. Yes, we only got three responses from the Commission, so not everyone has weighed in on the 29th and 30th.
Guys, you gotta respond to those things, please, just keep it moving. So let's clean it up right now. What are the, what were the proposed times?
They were both to, both of those meetings could start here at 5 o'clock, as early as 5:00, or we could start at 6:30 usually.
And those dates again were?
The 29th and 30th of November.
29th and 30th. And so, and the reason I picked those is I wanted to be sure that we were, if we had a special meeting, that it was here. I didn't want to have a meeting that where we didn't have the ability to have the record clear for Lori's purposes and everything else. So we had how many people say yes for any, who, I was a yea for both, we had some nays. Could we just, a show of hands, is anybody available on the 29th for a special meeting? Okay, on the 30th for a special meeting? Okay, so we still don't have quorum. So that answers that, we're not meeting the end of November. My proposal is that, provided that the issue response is more complete by next Monday, that we meet and go through, while it's on our agenda, we meet and go through in a committee of the whole, and add a recommended yea-nay, at least by those of us that are present, and we have that document, you know, with some still unknowns, I would wager, if there's some issues that are yet to have been flushed out. And that we carry that as a starting document to the 5th of December. Is everybody okay with that?
Just as an update, I am going to be out of town November 24th through December 10th, but if I'm the only one that's missing, and we would still have a quorum, I'll just vocalize.
You around next week?
Yep.
So you'd still weigh in on a variety of, while informally, on a variety of issues. Is everybody okay with that process to just get us closer to the goal line? Yeah, so it'll be pretty informal, basically, so we're going to postpone the tonight's agenda item to next week, and then next week, I fully intend, we'll continue the meeting to December 5th. But our goal next Monday would be to go through the issue response that you provided us, and I, it would be nice if you had a blank column, so we could take some notes in the far-right column or whatever, and we'll go through them. I'm here, I'm here next week. Or you can sit here. I know. Right now, I'm planning on being here. It's a regularly scheduled meeting unless, it's in the, so 6:30, next meeting. And I would imagine we'd have about two hours in us at most, and we'd, so we'd kind of get through what we can in two hours, and, yeah, does that work for folks? So commitment to read through the updated issue response by then, bring your questions, bring your, kind of where you're at, we'll do sort of informal, none of that in a committee of the whole is on the formal record, so really what it is, is it's for staff to glean enough of what they think the consensus are to guess whether we're supportive, not supportive, or just kind of in dispute, maybe there's amendments on there. And then we know when we get to the deliberations, kind of what we need to focus on. Everybody good with that? You guys good with that, Tom?
I guess it would be helpful if during the committee of the whole, that their, the direction could be as clear as possible, but I guess that's just a request.
I know, I know, so Lori, I mean, we don't, we usually take you offline as soon as we're in committee of the whole, that's not part of the record, correct? Are you willing to still operate the voting mechanism during that? If we wanted to, yeah, do you agree with staff changes, yea-nay, and we kind of just get a sense if we needed to, so we could do that? Okay, yeah, and if it's an unknown, you put an unknown in the column, which means we have to discuss it or move it separately.
Okay, thank you, that'd be great.
Okay, thanks. We're going to take just a couple minutes, and we'll be back as close to 7, or let's call it, yeah, close to 7 as we can. Thanks.